Good evening. It's time for us to begin our March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five meetings. Right now, I'm going to ask Reverend Hurston if he would come and give our application. Robert Hurston, you're one of the prominent Baptists Church.
Gracious ever Father, I am so thankful that you've given me an opportunity just to be able to assemble here among these people. And just to be able to be a part of this meeting. And to be at a place that you have been before and a building that you have lessons with. And we thank you Father for all that you have done and what you're doing in the city of Wanaco. And we thank you Father for the leadership of Stokes County and here in Wanaco. And fathers, as we have gathered here to discuss business of building of this community for the betterment of this city. We pray ever Father that the decision that is being made that will take the lives of your people, these decisions will be made, it will be better for your people, and that will be better for the city of Wanaco. We thank you Father for what has already been accomplished. We realize that nothing can be done without your help, for you say in your word, all things are possible through the Lord Jesus Christ. And we thank you for all that has already been done. And as we go into this meeting, we ask that your leadership, your spirit will guide and lead your people and help them to make the right decision. And that you give them the skill and the knowledge to help them to do that which is right for your people. We love you God, and we praise you for who you are and for who you are in our lives, because it's your presence in us that makes all the difference. And we thank you, we love you. We ask your presence here tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Stand and give the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our announcements, Wanaco Board of Commissioners, Reverend meeting Thursday, April tenth, seven o'clock at the Wanaco Town Hall Commission Chamber. Wanaco Fire Department Monthly Meeting, Thursday, April third, seven o'clock at the Wanaco Fire Department. Wanaco Planning and Zoning Board Meeting, April the third, at six thirty at the Wanaco Town Hall Commission Chamber. Town Recycling is going to be March fourteenth and twenty eighth, March fourteenth and twenty eighth. And at this time, I'd just like to take this opportunity to say welcome to the citizens of Wanaco. We're in a new building that's, it's a beautiful facility. It's been a long time coming. When the town was established in eighteen eighty-nine, and this is the first official building legislated for the town of Wanaco. We're just so honored to be here, to have worked together with a team. But during this process, it's always, and I say team, and I'm going to say commissioners, town manager, and staff. During this process, the former mayor, Mr. Charles Mitchell, and I'm going to recognize his wife tonight because she's here. That's Geraldine Mitchell, and I'm going to ask her to stand. The former mayor's wife, Geraldine Mitchell. During this term, he had a lot of compassion. Charles, they named the building as Kim. It's worked with him prior to my coming on. Charles E. Mitchell Building. When you use that name, like when I say Charles E. Mitchell Building, the legacy and the light that Charles Mitchell had, and I will go into more details when we have a grand opening. It's going to be sometime in May, but just wanted to give you, for those that's here tonight, just a briefing about Charles E. Mitchell. He was first a commissioner for the town of Wanaco. He also became the first African American mayor for the town of Wanaco. And his vision and his leadership through the Lord Jesus Christ, he was a man of God. He attended Pine Hall Baptist Church. He did prison ministry. He used to go to the nursing home on Sundays, and he would teach Sunday School right here in Wanaco. And then let's go on and on and visit those in the hospitals and having their compassion. He went all day long just to go and witness. Dear friend, it's Reverend Robert Hurston. He did the prayer tonight. He had a lot of respect for him, and they were close in the years that they knew of each other. And I just wanted to say, you know, when you look at that name, that name says a lot about who he was. And it's just nice that he even, you know, asked his son, sitting here on the right side of him, Thomas Mitchell. And they both ran, and Thomas was a riding, and Charles won that year, and Thomas won as a riding. And, you know, it's about community coming together, and we have a beautiful town. And I think that he would be just proud to see each and every one of y'all here tonight, especially the workers for the facility that they worked in and the concern that he said y'all need a new building to work in for all the labor that you do for this town. So I just wanted to give you a little brief of who he was, and we are just so honored to recognize that name tonight, Charles E. Mitchell. And at this time, I'm going to ask for any public comments.
Mr. Angie Bailey.
I just wanted to celebrate the first, and a wonderful building, the first meeting in the building, and take this opportunity to thank all of you for all that you do for the code group. We appreciate you so much. We're satisfied that you can be a part of the grand community. This is just, we worked with, you know, of course, Mayor Joe's well, and so this is just something so special. I'm so happy for all of you. We appreciate all their support and hope that we can help in any way. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to the code group for what they do for the town of Wanaco. We appreciate you and the members.
That's it.
Adjustment and adoption to the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I have no adjustments to the agenda. I did add a couple of add-on sheets, but it will only help with the packet, but it's nothing new.
Okay, thank you. So there's no adjustments to the agenda. Now we need approval of the minutes from February the thirteenth, Attachment A. It's been moved in second for the approval of the minutes on February the thirteenth. Questions are ready to vote. Those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the introduction of this North Carolina State Representative for the town of Wanaco, another area. It's Kyle Hall. Before we come forth, I would just like to say to you tonight that Kyle Hall has worked tremendously for the town of Wanaco and other municipalities in Stokes County. He's done a great job. He had a lot of heart in this town hall. He really went to work for Wanaco and all the things that he did. And it's, it's just nice when you can get back to the representatives and they come to our meetings and really support us. So he had a lot of work into this and getting some things approved, grants and so forth. So he's a representative. I think he's got a big position in the General Assembly now, and he can further tell you about that as well. But we're going to ask Kyle Hall to come up.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I didn't have you on the campaign trail. Let me also say that's a beautiful picture of downtown Wanaco. The water tower is essential now. But this is truly an honor to be here tonight, to be here in this new town hall. This is definitely a stunning building right here, and this is a real good showpiece for y'all and for Stokes County as a whole, I think. And so I think that y'all are going to get some good use out of this building. And Kim, you did a great job getting this all organized here. Thank you for what you do for the town of Wanaco, for Stokes County.
Thank you.
Thank you. So just to give you a quick little legislative update, we are in, I mean, an odd number of years. So that means that we are in our long session year, which we began at late January, and we will try to wrap things up by July fourth, hopefully. We have a brand-new Speaker of the House. That is Destin Hall out of Caldwell County, in relation to me, because I am taller than him. I'm assuming that that, so Destin is the youngest Speaker in North Carolina history at thirty-seven years old. And so we are hitting the ground running. The top ten priorities for the legislature this session, all ten of those top priorities are rebuilding Western North Carolina, and rightfully so. The damage that's in Western North Carolina, which I've toured a couple of times already, that is around sixty billion dollars would be for rebuilding the western side of the state. We've already appropriated about a billion so far at the end of last year to help with the recovery efforts, but we obviously have much more that we need to do. We're also waiting for what the feds will do for that matter, because you don't want to duplicate efforts. The feds are already going to take care of certain items, and we're sitting waiting on Washington DC just like everybody else always does. They've moved exceptionally slow. But we passed this, this month in the House, Anderson had passed, but there's some minor differences, about five hundred million more dollars for Western North Carolina for things like crop loss, for temporary housing for the folks that are up there, because it really is such a, it's a sad situation that we're dealing with. Never thought that we would have to deal with something like this, but here we are. The Speaker appointed me to be the new Senior Appropriations Chairman, which means that I'm mostly locked up in a windowless room in the basement of the Legislative Office Building, listening to a bunch of fiscal analysts tell me a bunch of numbers. But part of my job is to do this hurricane recovery effort. And so we're having to spend a whole lot of time, and that's why I've been up to the western side of the state a couple of times just to see what all we're dealing with. We just had the state of the state last night, and the President had to stay, and you and the Governor had to stay in the state. Obviously, his number-one concern, too, was rebuilding Western North Carolina. We are working on a very strong bipartisan effort with him to make sure that our folks up there in the mountains are taken care of. There's, honestly, there's not been a whole lot of bills that have made it out of the House or the Senate, because we're only in, you know, maybe week four or five, you know, one of those weeks we were out for snow. But that's, that's where we are now. Like I said, we're mainly dealing with hurricane recovery efforts. The budget, this go-around, we have about five hundred million dollar surplus, which is good. That means people are flocking to North Carolina, rightfully so. And we're looking, in the coming years, you know, we have kind of a structural deficit, unfortunately, with our tax debts that are set in the statute, but we're going to take care of that, make sure that our local communities are still taken care of and our state employees. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Does anybody on the board have or any comments? If, I'm going to sit down. But again, thank y'all for having me here tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for all you did in Wanaco, and also Camp Greenwood, and working with Kim and making all this come together. We appreciate it. On the next, we have our Sheriff's Department.
There is a slide changer, but we don't have a presentation.
How you know that you're the man there earlier? That's all right. We'll wait it out there. Good evening, Mayor. It's good to see you and the council members here, and a beautiful facility here. Had the opportunity to kind of track the progress that this has gone on, so it's exciting to be in it. Ted, and continue that I, I guess, hung out in the office a couple of days ago, just to get the feel for it, I guess. So excited about having that down there as well. Just a tremendous job here for Wanaco. Again, I'm born and raised here my whole life, so town hall being from across Southeastern, I believe, one time to here, to here now. So I've seen it move throughout the years, I guess. So just excited to see this in Wanaco. As, as, which I was just saying, Wanaco has just done tremendous things in the last several years, and it's put in place up here. And this is just the newest addition, so excited for you folks to have this here. Just a couple of things that we're going to talk about. The, the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-four, a little bit behind, and I guess trying to get down here. So we were looking at some, just some of the numbers in general. It's about four hundred, I think it's about four hundred and fifty-three calls, four hundred and fifty-some calls for October, November, and December here through the communications center for the town of Wanaco. Nothing, blessing, it's a blessing, nothing major or catastrophic for Wanaco, but just very, very fortunate here in the town. The number-one hangups we had, none of those came out to be anything. We did have one break in dinner with the dispatch team. It turns out that a neighbor walked into the rental park. That's what that was. And so nothing came of that. And so traffic and transport, we were pretty fairly aggressive on that, trying to make sure that things were happening safely up down the roads here. We did get the opportunity to participate in the Halloween event in October, and holy cow. Everybody from Wanaco and neighboring communities came to that event. I know we gave out every bit of candy we had and stickers that we had and everything, and it became a handshake moment there toward the end. And then had the opportunity to participate in the Christmas parade, so that was a fun time there. Beautiful weather for that event, great crowd on that. I think we were to provide about six or seven officers probably for that event there to town. Other than that, I mean, it's just, I feel like still a great working relationship, just the honor of being down here and being a part of the, being a part of Wanaco here. Some of the commissioners as well as town managers, I try to meet with Mr. Greenwood about once a month, just to make sure everything's okay. Got time to check in. And so I'm down here quite often, just visiting and hanging out with everyone. So, but overall, we've been very, very, very fortunate, and Wanaco is just a blessed little town.
Well, I'll tell you, Chief Deputy Henry, not in an official capacity, but I have the opportunity to interface with several of your deputies in town just by having the chance. Uniforms are very clean, car parks are in care of. The traffic enforcement has been very progressive. It's really loved the stuff in the middle of town down, especially the trucks. We've got a shop over here that I've actually seen the trucks get by in the back of the road on her shop. So we really appreciate it. There's a lot more people, a lot more pedestrian traffic. But I've worked publicly with you for over ten years, and I can tell you I've never seen it as well managed as it is now. So I appreciate it.
Well, it's a working relationship, and so we appreciate that. This is the opportunity, again, to meet with Mr. Greenwood, to get feedback, so if you have any concerns or anything, please share that with the manager. And I mean, with him, of course, we'll try to address that as best as we can. Me personally, I'm best to withstand those other things. My, my, my race runs about four miles, you can hear the traffic, four or five miles, you can tell it's coming. I'm Southeastern student. I used to walk from Southeastern to the old dark school back in the day.
I'm sorry, I missed your name.
Eric Homey. See you in a minute. As he used to call me at Lions Park when I played baseball, Ice Cream Cone.
Chris Lawson.
So he did get the, he is actually working today, as a matter of fact, so he is the supervisor of this shift, the daytime supervisor. But he moves around, so he still comes and hangs out with town, uses a few hours a day as he's kind of managing, seeing what's happening around. So he still comes and visits.
He's very good at traffic enforcement. He's very, yeah.
Fortunately, some people do agree that he's very good at traffic enforcement, some do not.
It's a, it's a limit, not a target.
But yes, I'll be sure to pass that on to him, but he does still come back down here just due to his certification. He does have one creative certifications, and so we want to make sure he's in the town utilizing that here for you folks.
Yeah, they, they got back to speaking since his party, and they got back to speaking on email.
I'll have to get Mr. Neal back down here, too.
Just appreciate everything that you do, the Sheriff's Department. They also have an office here in the town hall. And also, I know y'all work real closely with the highway patrol as well for this district, so we thank y'all for the service that you do.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to recognize South Stokes students that's here tonight, just actually if you want to stay in, they'll just stay in the town hall from South Stokes High School. I see our Chief Boo is here tonight, and I just wanted to ask him if he would come up. He's our chief fire, fire rescue. I think he does a great job for the town of Wanaco as well. Just want to ask him if he would please come forth and maybe give some words.
Chief, I'd like to get if you have a minute, just to explain all the requirements of us even personally, this building, between them, fire marshal.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmen, thanks to the town staff. We are truly a blessed town. We've got all that here as well, and we have designability. We're also a Wanaco native. And so we all take compassion and thankfulness for the opportunity to have a new building and to see the growth of the town. As Commissioner Garber said, there was a lot of work leading to getting the building okay, working with the contractors, ensuring that the building codes and fire codes were met, and then ensuring that the ultimate goal was to provide a safe atmosphere for the citizens of Salem. To ensure that the fire alarm system worked, to ensure that all the exits, all the exit doors are in compliance, to make sure that in the event that a fire was to appear here for building, that the fire pump had access to the building as well as the maintenance building. And so it's truly been a team effort to ensure compliance with the building code, fire codes. We've got part-time inspectors. Most municipalities have full-time building inspectors, full-time fire inspectors. But for right now, the town has two part-time building inspectors and one by part-time fire marshal. And so we are very fortunate that we have well-knowledgeable individuals to ensure compliance. We're hoping in the near future to have a meeting agreed with a building inspector and the fire marshal, so the victims owners will get to know them so that they won't be surprised if inspection comes up or if a new residential label is being built or something's being built in the town, that you have utmost confidence in two individuals that are going to ensure the safety of the citizens and the public that are entering those buildings. And I also will take a minute to recognize our Chief Deputy, Eric Homey. Prior to this meeting, him and about six other first responders in the county just completed a more climate emergency responder course. And four out of those seven individuals have already passed their state test. Chief Homey was also one of those individuals that have gone past his state test. And then this is showing our age, our commitment to the, to the citizens of the town, but also to the county. He has a ton of responsibilities in his role as Chief Deputy for the Sheriff's Office, but he still took time enough to go and take a night to the hundred-and-twenty hour course at night every Saturday to help out his community who that lives in. And so that shows you the commitment of the people that are working for the town, working for the county, and obviously with Kyle Hall working in Raleigh. Those are individuals that truly care about our community. And that says a lot about the people that helped myself and Eric, and some of those individuals who sat up here with the elderly, a former back that played baseball at Lions Park, and other people that are sent to the train. And we would not be in our roles if we did not have positive influence in the meaningfuls. And we chose to stay in Wanaco, we chose to stay in Stokes County, because our community is always going to give to us. We always want to give back to our community. And so this building is a recognition of hard work and dedication of many people throughout the years to show that we are truly a community, and it's going to continue to grow. And so thank y'all for the opportunity to serve, thank you for mentoring me and others, so we can still grow up and be a part of this work here to see how the future of Wanaco will be. So thank you.
You did a great job for the town of Wanaco. And we, as you say, it's a nice town, and there's a lot of compassion in this town. And Alex, thank you for the job that you well done on this part of this building right here of Wanaco's, on right here in Wanaco. So you did a great job with the architecture of the building. We appreciate that.
Mayor, I'd like to trail in on the fire department, just a minute, one second, but those fire hydrants are being repaired, and they started last week. So all the fire hydrants that have been a problem, some you can see them taped, bagged, whatever, and it's getting out of hand. But thankful to Randy Griffin and company, they've been through inventory what's done, and to give the fire sheet so that they can be tested and moved and put back online.
Appreciate you following up on that.
One of the things, the home trailer that was watered, it was a fire drain, should be here within the next couple of weeks. So that home trailer initially was, we did a bit for the fire department, it was for the town. So many events that we have in town, we usually will have to buy a department, home trailer from the county to help off the areas and so forth. Now we'll have a home, home trailer, different type of truck. And we'll have two hundred-plus homes on it, if you just go back there. And we will have access to it. And yesterday I applied for another four or five thousand dollar grant to try to do it, like try to have this. And so hopefully we'll be successful for that, but again, it's trying to be, to be safe for the people to use it.
Thank you so much. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, I believe you're going into old business?
We're going into old business at this time. Okay, so this is planning and zoning board in-town position. This is Attachment B.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, there are two applications, and over the last month, the board had directed me to post that on the internet and our Facebook page, to take any applications for the in-town position. And included in your package should be the two applicants that applied back to that position that Mr. Durrell currently holds. His term expires in April. And, and I, and these were the only two that we'd received. That was at five o'clock yesterday. We did put a timeline until five o'clock on Wednesday, and these are the two. And of course, the board, you have the choice to, to consider those. We do have a little wiggle room. We can, you know, if, you anticipate more applications, we can table it, but that's certainly to the discretion of the board.
This is only, I don't think this will make him, is it, or would have left you the question?
That is getting back into the, from Mr. Perry's office on the topic of elections.
Okay, so, okay, so this is item A for planning and zoning board in-town position, Attachment B.
So these positions are extremely important to our town, with the amount of growth that we're experiencing. With the amount of growth that we're experiencing, the plans are being placed before us, before them, actually. The considerations of what would be required in those subdivisions, right now, I'm telling roughly sixty-seven homes this year that have been piped out already. And a lot of interest, all the homes in those places, a lot of interest. I'll just go ahead and say my feelings. I have no intention of staying on this board more than two times. I think anytime that anybody personally stays a long way to time, you're doing one of two things. Because people gravitate towards negative conditions and entirely reduce compatibility when they vote. But you're not giving somebody else with new opinion an opportunity to help in their town. And we're not giving a nice rotation for people who want interest. There's a lot more interest, as sort of Town Manager said, this building draws for, that have an interest in the town, because now they realize, hey, there is a town to go. I greatly appreciate Mr. Grayell's participation on this board and his insight, and I watched him in action. But I also see Sandra Johnson's application, and she brings a lot to the table as well. So, I just personally think it's time to, just, it's just like anything else, it's time to pull somebody up off the bench and into the field. And it's just time to consider rotating these boards. And that's pretty important where. So, if nobody else has anything to discuss, I'll just go ahead and make a motion that we accept Ms. Johnson's application for this town coming up there. And those towns are how long?
They're three years.
Three years. And that gives everybody an opportunity to rotate around, because one comes up every year.
Every year, there's one, yeah.
If I know, you know, and it's been much, again, compared to, we should actually give everybody an opportunity, just while we have the house. And my motion is to accept Ms. Johnson's application. So, unless somebody else for lack of a second, this motion will die. So, is there a non-parting, does somebody else have anything else they want to consider, or is it a second, please?
Has been moved in second, that Sandra, is it Sandra Johnson for the position of the planning and zoning board? Question, are you ready to vote? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Mr. Kim Greenwood?
Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
Board of Elections, request for preference?
Yes, ma'am. If you remember in our last meeting, we'd received a request from Mr. Perry's office in regards to possible changes to the Waukau's election. And he was needing to know something, and the three critical questions he asked for us is if the town is interested in early voting, in absentee voting, and to make the races nonpartisan, as he explained that some of them in Forsyth County are. I know that the board in the last meeting, in yours' discussion, I think it was a general consensus that you did like just the no early voting, no absentee, and the nonpartisan races, however, we never did, we were gonna, you were gonna think about it for a month and really decide. And if you could tell me tonight what the board's decision is, and I will let him know of what's your feelings or what you decide to do on this.
And my recommendation is to keep it as it is, we're a small town, and I, that's my recommendation, just to keep the, as it is, as it is planned, so it has been passed.
And absentee voting and early voting comes with a cost?
It is, it's an additional cost if you add the absentee or the early voting. I think two years ago, it was about fifty-five hundred dollars is what it cost the town to put on an election. And that's just folks' votes the day of the election. So, if you add the early voting and absentee voting, it is more expensive. And the final question too, and I do need to ask you if, and I've almost forgotten, if you want to still continue charging the five dollars for them to, for filing fee? When they go to the end of the filing period to file for any of our offices, the five dollars is still adequate, that's what you want. So, I guess there's more things that I need from you tonight, and that's been the standard practice, it's always been five dollars for the last ten years, I know, so.
My recommendation is, because it's pretty much my position, very much.
So, I'm really making a motion that we make no changes to our current process.
Been moved in second to maintain the, second, second. On the right, for Commissioner, Mutual and Commissioner, may, we make no changes. There was two seconds, second. There would be no changes, Board of, Request for Precares. A question, are you ready to vote? Those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, new business, consideration of adoption, GIS agreement with Stokes County, Attachment C.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, under Attachment C, as you all are aware, the Stokes County and items A and B kind of go hand in hand with one another. But Stokes County, their tax office actually does our tax collection. We are reevaluation year again, so they absorb and handle all of our tax collections and send us that. They also manage the GIS program when we pull up the tax maps or the maps of property. They also do the GIS system for us and manage that as well. These are two separate programs, so the Attachment A is the adoption or an agreement with the County of Stokes to maintain their, maintain our relationship to keep our, the GIS system, the global, GIS is the.
Geographical information.
Yeah, geographical information system. And I believe Ms. Brown, she had reached out to the Assistant County Manager to, actually, the research, we'd never actually had an agreement, or neither party would find our old agreement with them, so this is a new one.
It's like the nineteen seventies when the town, they started doing this, and we didn't have an agreement, so we wanted one in place.
And they were in agreement with this as well.
When I looked at that, it's a cost associated with our agreement for the GIS.
When I spoke to Ms. Brown, there was no discussion of a cost. I did reach back out to her, I've not heard back. In the event, I think we can do an amendment to the agreement if you wanted to pass it now, and then, once I have confirmation from her, we can amend that the language in there allows for the amendment of, and Mr. Campbell had also reviewed both agreements, just to make sure we were, they were.
And Ms. Brown, if you would, would pull that microphone closer to the seat. Or may you take it count?
Can you hear me now?
I'm sorry, I just.
Yes, but we can amend if we need to. I have not heard on the GIS agreement, if there is a cost, couldn't find one, there was not a conversation about that. So, when I get confirmation from Ms. Brown, we can.
And I'm saying there is definitely a need to have this agreement, Mr. Campbell, during. Yes, sir, and my understanding is historically, there's not been a charge, this has been in place since the seventies. So, that would be a change, a course direction from the county if a charge were imposed for these services. But I think it is best case to have an interlocal agreement in place, just to memorialize that those services will be provided by the county. With that, I'll make a motion to accept the agreement presented by the town board.
Both are just, you just need to GIS, ma'am.
I'm sorry, but it hasn't been considered of the adoption of the GIS agreement with Stokes County. That agreement, in second, question, are you ready to vote? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Consideration of adoption, tax, of tax collection.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is, this is a new one too, this is, this is different from the GIS. Stokes County, we, and I think archivally, we've not found our, neither party would find their contract to where it binds us to what we pay. We don't, the town of Waukau does not have a tax office per se, we don't collect our own taxes. We don't do the assessments every seven years, thanks to that nature, Southern County does handle that part for us at a fee. It has been one percent of the general adblock taxes and the taxes that they collect for us, this year it is going to one point seven five percent. So, that is what they had agreed or they have put into their budget. So, the, in a local agreement that you have before you is the agreement that I think that they will agree to. And I believe, Mr. Campbell, have you had a chance to look at this document?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Campbell, I would present this to the board for your consideration to continue with that agreement with the county.
So, you know, I brought this up because apparently there was an email sent out by the county manager to the municipalities, but I don't think it was received here, because I know our town manager won't ask anybody the day of, and there was no awareness here. My first question is, I believe, as I was prepared to buy this.
The Stokes County?
Yeah, the county manager, yes. That it was somewhere around fifty-five hundred dollars a year, but I'm not sure where that math comes from. I'm not sure what they're putting, what they were putting the one percent on to begin with, to get that number. Doesn't exactly make a lot of sense, but I guess it really doesn't matter at this point, because they passed without any input from the municipalities. The contract, Commissioner, is based on a percentage of the gross collected adblock taxes. So. So, just to run that, what is that number?
Off the top of my head, you're probably looking at about eight hundred thousand a year, was it last year? This is before the reevaluation, so one percent of that is eighty thousand? My math's invalid.
Sure.
Kim, is there any way we could table this, because I wanted to do a little research myself, and is it?
Well, ma'am, we probably could. The problem, we have, we're kind of, we're on their ball field, and it's their ball, and it's their glove, so I don't know if we don't do it. We're not good to do it.
We have to do something by May first. We're obligated to the North Carolina Department of Revenue to have stuff set, so. So, one percent is eight thousand, and that's what the county manager. So, you know, we're going up roughly six thousand, so there you go. That's, one point seven five percent of the eight hundred would be fourteen thousand. So, that's why it's not going to, it's not going to kill us, I'm just really kind of curious what we're getting at, that's the size they're getting. I'm going to be opposite, we're going to be flat out, just like I told you. This is a tax increase on our citizens, just with a different mandate, that's all it is. So, this town, your tax dollars, if you're a citizen of the corporate limits, and I don't want it code, they have literally six thousand dollars out of your coffers here. I don't see any more people, I don't see anything else. I, so I'm not trying to spur the pot, well, but I'm sure I am. But again, call it what it is, I ran on transparency. We never had a chance to even say this to them, or, you know, just to, shoot, it'd be really nice to just find out what, how this works. But again, as you said, it is passed, and it is what it is. But I want you, and whoever sees this, to understand, when you go to the polls next year, stop this, what it is, call it what it is. It is a tax increase, and that's all I have to say.
It sounds like there's nothing we can do about it anyway.
No, sir, except make sure that I do what I said I was going to do, a lot of things. And one on that line was transparency, and I want everybody in our town to know that that's essentially what's taking place.
Kim, what's the deadline?
Mayor, I believe Commissioner Garber said, or, Mr. Campbell, is it May first? I've heard May first floated around, is that?
I thought that did, the school recommended that any changes to anything to taxation would be made first. I know we don't have a definite, say, per se deadline, other than the fact that without the agreement, they could say, oh, I'm sorry, we're not doing your business for you. I guess it would need to be in the budget, so it needs to be, right, so we do have that deadline.
Kim, what is the date of the town's budget retreat?
It will be scheduled for March twenty-sixth. It will not be completed by then, but March twenty-sixth is the first budget workshop we have scheduled.
Could we table it to that budget retreat?
Absolutely, yes.
Because it's just in a few weeks, and I just want to.
That's an option, absolutely.
I'll second that. It's been moved in second that we have tabled the consideration of tax collection, Attachment D. A question, are you ready to vote? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. I just, for my own research and get some facts about what's going to be taking place, that's all, that's all I'm seeing. That's all I'm seeing, the fact, what the numbers are, so I appreciate it. Okay? Just a few weeks. Got it?
Yep, a couple of weeks, yeah.
So, right now, we are down without the department report.
We are. Mayor, and I would like to start, Mr. Campbell, we, and I was going to get into this later on, but he was kind enough to come with us last Thursday night for a Board of Adjustment meeting, he stayed for four or five hours with us, and we are very appreciative of not only being a very skilled attorney, but quite a gentleman too, so we're very honored to have him. Mr. Campbell, is there anything that you need to, that you need to brief us on legal-wise, anything? Hate to put you on the spot, but they did Brian Doos, so I'll put you on the spot.
Well, nobody's suing us, that's. The only thing I would bring before the board, I had been asked to look at preparing a contract amendment with All American Associates of Mount Airy. Ron Nyland has been providing services to the town at a monthly compensation rate of two thousand five hundred dollars per month. And at the direction of the manager, at the request of Mr. Nyland, there is. there's been a request to increase that rate of compensation to three thousand dollars because he's taken on additional services as things have developed over the, the course of this contract. And he had asked for the board to consider that. I do have a contract amendment. I don't know if we need to act on that now or wait until the budget retreat. But I do have that contract for the board to consider as an amendment changing the rate of compensation from twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars payable to All American Associates. Well, I know we discussed this at our last retreat and I believe, I know Commissioner Hairston was sick, not as many people were, especially at that time, but I believe everybody was, um, the consensus was in agreement and, um, we're going to have a lot of stuff to deal with at the budget retreat already. So I just wanted to make a motion to do that now. I know that was a scale and I know that when things evolve, if they're, if it goes in a direction as we've all talked about, that it, um, there'll be some, another adjustment, um, July or so. So I, I think I should go ahead and accept that, um, contract amendment as presented by the town attorney. And just for the benefit of the public, All American Associates is providing consulting services to the manager and to the board as an independent contractor. So this is not an employment agreement. This is an, an independent contractor agreement that is terminable on thirty days notice with Mr. Nyland's group, All American Associates, which is an organization that provides managerial consulting services on an independent basis to several municipalities, including currently rural hall, I believe, but several in this geographic area. And he's been with the town for eight months now, I believe. And this is just a, an increase in scope of services. It is also reflective of an increase in the compensation rate.
It's been moved in second. The contract amendment run out to continue, um, contract from twenty-five to three thousand a month. Um, question, are you ready to talk? Those in favor? Okay, department report? Departmental.
Yes, Mayor. I'm sorry. Mayor, and, and I would, I would, uh, Mr. Campbell, was anything else we needed on that? Thank you. Um, I'll refer to, uh, Finance Officer Bryant. She's advised by conversation with Gibson and Company to anticipate our audit to be, uh, completed by March thirty-first. Uh, we will advise the board as soon as the audit is received, that the audit is completed. Mr. Pendry will be sched- scheduled for the April meeting to give the board the audit report. Have any further updates with Mr. Pendry?
Uh, no, he's in the final stages. Uh, he sent his letter to Mr. Campbell. Um, they've got that taken care of. So really now he's finalizing everything. I have been into discussion with the, uh, N C Treasury's office. They're good with everything that they've seen. Um, once this is complete, he's presented it to the board, we are completely caught up. Um, and then on top of that, the Treasury's office just extended typically our, um, audits are due October thirty-first, but because there are so many municipalities that are behind, um, you can't find auditors fill in the blank. It, instead of being due October thirty-first, they are due December thirty-first. Um, and so, uh, we can't officially, or we can't really send him anything until July one. That's when our fiscal, well, really July thirty-first, um, when our fiscal year ends and we get, uh, the bills from June. So, any questions?
Now, before the record, I'm going to tell everybody here that audit should have been turned in to the state local government commission by thirty-one December. And I'm only saying this, I know that there's been a lot of issues. Um, people, and that's not uncommon, people leaving because of death within the organization. Uh, I just want our citizens to be aware of how important it is the work that our town clerk and finance officer, Ms. Bryant, does. Um, the oversight from our county because there's nothing that we do that is not in North Carolina statute, come out by the North Carolina state legislature. They have a local government commission. It's one of the reasons why North Carolina is extremely solid. Because they will not let you become insolvent. They will come and take your town. So it's, it's one of those very important things. But I appreciate it because Ms. Bryant has done everything she can to get this accomplished. Another one, maybe that the audits, if it comes up, is any fault of our town staff is just in unfortunate circumstances within that company. Thank you, Ms. Bryant.
And, uh, Mayor, I would continue under the admin, um, Amanda, she wears a lot of different hats. You'll see her name mentioned as Finance Officer, Town Clerk. And now it's just Amanda is working closely with the new web design. The board did direct us, I believe it was last month or month before, applies to work towards a new web design. And she is working with that and getting some pictures, the radio button, buttons. And hopefully in the April, we can, we have the technology to actually demonstrate that here inside.
I met with them, went over the design, what they're trying to do. Um, and they're like, be very honest. And I'm like, don't worry, I will. You probably won't like me when this is over. But, excuse me, uh, it's going to be very user friendly, very professional for the citizens. There'll be an option if they see something that needs to be done. They can go on the website, hit a button, file a report. It gets sent to us. The guys get it. It can, they can also trace it and track any concerns that they have. There's a rolling news event. So if something's going on like a code red or we have, um, Fall Fest or whatever the case may be, it'll constantly be rolling on there. New calendar. Um, very clean, very professional, user friendly, all of the documents. Very excited about it. So if you want to come by and see what it potentially will look like. So.
So, I'm just, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure, quick question, because we have a very robust software application and it's called Beehive.
Mm-hmm.
It does a lot of things as far as inventory tracking and you can track all your potential collective or courses, things that have to be done accordingly and what they support.
Right.
Have they determined that they can tie that into Beehive or is that going to be, but we will somehow get that.
Yeah, the, the goal right now is to get it, if a citizen is to, uh, report an issue, uh, say a street sign's down, that it will link directly into Beehive and they will get a notification immediately. That is the goal. We're working with Beehive and Revise, our website host, um, or design team, sorry. They are working on trying to bridge that gap. Is it going to happen? I'm, I'm, hopefully so.
I appreciate that effort, but because they're a little streamlined.
Yes.
They're looking at every option of efficiency.
Yes.
Um, no, we're not going to take the sledgehammer approach. We, uh, we look at efficiency, uh, opportunity. Juro and we have a great staff and we think that we can look at trying to get easier for the meetings and successful for our citizens.
Um, roughly four weeks. I have an, I have another meeting, um, with our head designer next week. Um, I seem to think it's Tuesday. I could be wrong on that. Uh, once we get the, she's going to have some, um, rough drafts, so to speak, for, for me to look at. Um, but that meeting, we finished the kickoff meeting. If they send something saying, hey, I need this, I immediately send it back. The delay I'm running to right now is new updated pictures um, of the town. I reached out to a couple of photographers so we can have those very professional pictures. I'm waiting for them to get back. They can continue to design and build the layout without the pictures. So once I get those, we'll be able to implement those. They'll put placeholders in there, so to speak. But roughly four to five weeks.
And, uh, Mayor, number three, the, obviously the old building is now demolished and removed and we've occupied the new space. The landscaping of the building is currently being completed. The sidewalks are being framed and are nearly completed. The paving will begin in coming days upon the completion of the sidewalks. The plan on port the sidewalk, whether permitting, that will be Tuesday morning. Uh, there remains a lot of little things to be completed, uh, but it's get, getting better with each passing day. I appreciate everyone's patience with, with us. We are still in a moving and cleaning process. I do promise the board and the citizens that this will look better. The next time that you come, it will start looking better. So we, that's one of the problems of having to leave, leave a structure and move in at the same time. So, but it, it is getting better. Uh, just as a reminder, the Walco Board of Commissioners will have, uh, have scheduled a budget workshop meeting for Wednesday, March twenty-sixth at one o'clock. And if you'd like to have lunch, it could be here at twelve. We'll do the lunch here and then convene here at one. As for the L P A, they had a very good month last month. Uh, their transaction fees were twelve thousand, four hundred and two dollars and forty-two cents. With the notary and miscellaneous fees that they collected was twenty-four hundred and sixty dollars, giving a total of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-two cents. Uh, we only lost about a day and a half due to the move for the L P A. I do, I do want to thank all of those that worked with the D M V, the D I T, um, folks. There's a lot of wires in this building that, that I could not ever, ever imagine. They made it a smooth transition. And then I do have to commend, uh, Commissioner Jarvis, assistant to state with the internal design of the data system and all performed, uh, perfectly. And I do thank him and the state for making this. When we originally was here, when the, the original office opened in twenty fifteen and it took us three weeks, three weeks to, uh, get our office open once we got back. And so they made it happen and we were only lost about a day and a half and that was with moving. So I was real pleased with that. So, so I thank all, everybody that made that possible. Uh, in regards to Public Works, did have a meeting with, uh, Mark Bowman, our Public Works Director, the materials and, and with Mr. Griffith, the materials have been received for the fire hydrant, uh, repair and replacement. In my discussion with Mr. Bowman, um, he's advised the initial assessment of the hydrants indicates there are approximately fifteen that can be repaired just by the matter of replacing some oils and seals, which makes it a quicker and easier rather than a replacement to get those back up to speed. His plan is to have the simplest ones repaired first. The ones requiring risers or replacements will be in the second phase. Hopefully all can be pleaded in about six weeks. Um, and we will denote, and Mr. Jarvis had made reference to our software. Any of these things that we do now in, in upgrades to our system or repairs to the hydrants, that will be, uh, keyed into our Beehive system so that five years from now or whenever someone else is looking at this, they can look back and say, when was hydrant number one twelve rebuilt, replaced, or whatever it was. So we will have actually digital records to keep up with some of these things. So uh, modern technology does a lot for us, but I will keep the board informed as we make progress with those. I do want to thank Public Works staff for helping to move all the furniture and supplies in the building. They did a lot of the heavy lifting and, uh, and Amanda and Brittany told him to move things to that side, to this side. So it's been a very complicated process. London Elementary has made a request for pedestrian crossing to be made into school. We have ordered the stencil and the paint. And Mark has reached out to his contacts with the O T. We want to make sure that we have the proper signage and leavening for our town streets as we, uh, plan to make the crosswalk, uh, as soon as those materials are received. It does take a special paint that will stay on the asphalt and to make sure it's, we've not determined if it's going to be pedestrian crossing or school crossing because it's, it could go as either, but we want to make sure that that is done to the state specifications. And so we, we agreed that we would do that work at the schedule. The sidewalk on your fifth street has been repaired. We'd completed a sewer repair there last month and that, uh, concrete work has been done up there. Uh, a new pump is being installed. If you pass by and you wonder what the crane is at the D M V well, that pump is being pulled. A new pump and the casing is being placed into that well. So hopefully as soon as they have the rest of the materials, that, uh, project will be done and we will have that well back on, um, back in use. And as in for planning zoning and the code enforcement, the planning zoning board and the board of adjustment did meet last week here in, in the chambers. The board of adjustment did approve a special use permit for Walco Tree Community Association for a playground. Um, I would commend, Mr. Yance is here with us tonight. He had to fill in as the chair for the board. Um, and I think, Mr. Campbell, well, yes, I think that, uh, he did an excellent job. If he wasn't an architect, he would make a fine attorney. So. So I was very proud of how that he conducted that. Uh, the next planning zoning board meeting will be Thursday, October third, or October, April third of twenty twenty-five here in this room. Uh, finally, and there is an additional sheet and I forgot to put it in the packet. It has the nice pretty colors on it. It's from Alliance. This is the attached, uh, monthly report for the month of February. Uh, the actions that they have opened, what has been abated and what is on hold. And this is kind of, gives a nice summary of where they're at in your code enforcement. And finally, that additional sheet is not on, in your agenda, but, uh, we just received this today that I believe Ms. Bryant, uh, prefaced this last month that the Division of Water Infrastructure has approved. The, this is the letter of intent to fund. This is the A I grant for your sewer project. This, uh, grant of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a required match of twenty percent. And they have, and if you'll notice these dates, the, the big thing that we have to do is those milestones, which by June ninth of twenty twenty-five, the preliminary scope submitted. And so we have to hit all of these high marks, but I thought that was, uh, very encouraging that we have, we have that in writing now that that's been approved. Finally, just a reminder of the budget workshop is March twenty-sixth. Uh, another reminder of the league dinner in Danbury. Danbury will be hosting their league dinner. It will be April seventeen. They will let us know more about the time and the place at a later date. And of course, all the town offices will be closed. Next month it'll be for Good Friday on April eighteenth of next month. All of the town offices will be closed. And I know that some, are there any other announcements? That I missed?
I would just encourage everybody if they're interested in, um, child-friendly opportunities, uh, check out Armstrong Ferguson Farm and, uh, they, uh, helicopter, they, uh, Easter egg drop. They got us some turkeys, uh, if you've seen Cincinnati. Um, and helicopter rides. At one time during the year, they gave balloon rides. It's heavily, but it's, it's pretty good view. Um, they do a lot of, um, field dog trials and this sheep herding. And there's, and there's a lot of kid-friendly places where they can get out and it's really warm up to ninety. And they do that all the time. So just look up their website. Um, also check out and keep up with, uh, our code group or events in town. Great opportunity there. Um, and concerts come up. Yay. I have fun. Um, I will. And I guess, I don't know if I understand. So, um, just keep in mind, you know, the same type of day as Monday, the day of celebration, the be a road keeper. Um, it is a, it is a campaign. There's no reason for you to be on the highway or our way without excessive miles. I've seen families destroyed in just seconds. So please keep that in mind and be safe. I would ask, and I'm glad if you don't mind, if you're just taking notes because I thought about it the other day while I seen, we have a lot of people that run early in the morning to utilize it. Sidewalk on Main Street is great. I love it. They come up and they make a loop, come down Summit Street. And I'm looking for whatever's chasing them because I'm not running unless it's on time. But would you consider, um, Mr. Cal Manager, if you so just direct, um, a lot of people are unaware that if they set the trash cans at the edge of the sidewalk in the yard, that the car, um, from truck can still reach it like easily. So those residents on the east side of Main Street, essentially where they start, which would be, um, Fourth Street up, maybe somewhere near.
To southeast.
Yeah, all the way up. And ask them to just, please be aware of this. These people are dodging those or people are, um, they're disabled in various ways using other appliances to be able to mobilize it or to use you. That was a long, long sentence for that, I guess. Um, I would also, Mr. Doral, how long have you served us on planning and zoning? When did you?
When did you call off that work? Before you gave permission?
I, I think the estimate was probably close to twelve years.
I think more than that, about fifteen.
Yeah. So I consider Wesley Gurrell my brother in Christ. So I don't want anybody to think there's a problem or anything else. It's just a philosophy of allowing citizens who have an interest to serve and learn by government. So I would ask that everybody give Mr. Gurrell a round of applause for his dedicated service to our town for all those years, along with other opportunities he's served in. Believe it or not, I'm finished.
And Mayor, that that concludes my department report. Other than thank you for the wonderful staff that you give me, a great town attorney, Mr. Campbell. This is what makes my job so easy. So I thank all of y'all. So that's all I have. Unless you have questions for me.
Here, I need to grab something really quick. No, I'm only, please. This one.
I'd like to, in the more commissioners, I just go ahead and go quickly on that. I just was concerned about the hydrant. The hydrants, it seemed like it was fifteen that needed the seals. But now what about the others? Was it like seventeen?
No, it was about thirty, I think is about what, thirty-seven. Yeah, some of them just need risers. Some will have to be replaced. So we're gonna try to do the easiest things first, so.
Also, I just want to say congratulations to South Stokes Junior Varsity. They ran, they played basketball, the boys did, and they went undefeated. So we're just so happy about that. I know that this summer they're gonna be coming up with London Park as a project with the town of Monaco for improvement on London Park. Amanda has been heading that up as well. There's gonna be a park over in London with shelter and restroom facilities. Also, I think they'll have a walking trail, and it was grant monies that was given for that park for the town of Monaco. So the beautification wouldn't come up. I want to say thank you to all the citizens of Monaco and trusting the board of commissioners and myself, town managers and staff that you do here. And I do it from my heart, try to do as I was sworn in to do. And I want to say thank you to each and every one of the citizens, also to all the businesses and the churches and to our communities. We just want to say, I just want to say thank you. And Kim, outstanding on what you've done with the town here, with the staff. I think you have about ten years, three and one. He's a sheriff. He's also, some years in LPA. He's also the town manager. And he has a great staff here that they stayed in the building for a number of years. And the conditions of those buildings, as I was stating, was unbelievable. They became very unique in what they did, but they never complained about it. But they stayed in there, but unfortunately, some of the conditions of the building was not up to code to just stay there. So it's just nice to see Amanda sitting there, Kim, and attorney, and all the commissioners, and you're sending them out in this chamber, what they call a chamber. And it's so nice to see you sitting here in the public works that now have official public works building where they can go and put their equipment in, they have showers and so forth. It's just really nice to see that. That's so, I say such a blessing from God. It's a blessing. It's truly a blessing. And I just have to just give God some praise right about that now, about that, because without him, we can't do anything. But with him, all things are possible. So I just want, that's all I have to say to say thank, thank each and every one of you. We support our businesses. Sometime come up, go get you a frappe from Ole Miss Coffee Shop. You got the best caramel frappes. And we have other businesses that have food and so forth. And we have a unique town, and I always like to support businesses because we want them to survive here and stay here. And so we just want to say in churches, we have beautiful ministers, Reverend Nurse, I pray tonight. We got Reverend Ward here tonight, Western Reverend Minister. So we just got some nice, nice things going on in the town of Monaco. And as, as Kyle talked about Western North Carolina, we just can't leave without saying that we continue it because I did go to a wildlife event, and I was sitting there, and the lady from Western North Carolina talked about the conditions that they have, and they're really having a hard time right now. Not, not just there, over in California, in different places. We're just fortunate and really blessed, but I do know that Western North Carolina, right here, just about a few hours from us, are really having a hard time. So I know they're gonna do a great job and try to get them back up and running. Code group, thank you. Looking forward to the concerts for this year. We're looking forward to the Fourth of July coming up on July third. So got some good things getting ready to take place in the town and crew stands as well. So that's all I have to say, Mr. Greenwood and the winner.
Madam Mayor, I do really sincerely appreciate you, and I will point out again, because this is live, you do live. How about that? I will point out to anybody that sees this, but who's recording for future viewing, if they can't make the means. This building is what you always like to call, is the best you can call anything, a structure or anything you're like, is called paid forward.
By Greens.
The building.
By Greens.
I want you to all know that over the last five to six, maybe seven years at the outside, our town staff has secured close to nine million dollars in monies. Now, nothing's ever truly free, but I can tell you all the way to California, somebody gave a dollar for this building. And it's gonna go somewhere. So you best grab it for our citizens, and that's what they have done. The water mapping grant, so we know what our capital improvement, I just, I really appreciate it. Madam Mayor, if you'll indulge your mind, one more second, I swear I'll get you out of here. Madam Park, one transition to County Attorney. Just as the pack.
Sure.
Meanwhile, she's doing that, I'm gonna say to the board of commissioners, they are a really good board to work with. Even to the former, the former board that have handsome project as well, it's Commissioner Joe Bennett, former Commissioner Joe Bennett, Danny Hurst, Commissioner Danny Hurst. This board of commissioners, you know, it's always good to be with a board. You can't feel alone. And we don't always agree, but it's good that we can come together and and support this town. That's what we were elected to do. Right? So we appreciate it. Mr. Greenwood, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I just appreciate, thank you to this board and to the citizens for letting me serve and again for giving me great people to work with. It was never me. It was all about them and what they did. So just thank you. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the reason I asked her to do that is for anybody that uses channel, either live or later on, I want them to see the rest of this building. That's the view that they're getting right now, so. So that, that just gives them a mind. The rest of this building. Thank you, Senator.
Anything else?
Yeah.
It's, it's free brand. You know, I was gonna say that, I know that, I'll tell you one day.
You gonna get in a little red ass?
Oh, sorry.
Isn't that more than second that was during the meeting? Question how you feel about those, those opinions, those opposed?